All right, everybody, welcome to the October ninth monthly meeting for Central Arkansas Astronomical Society. And my name is Chris, I'll be hosting tonight. Do we have any new members that are here? That would like to speak up and introduce themselves?
I noticed David's here. He was there at the observatory last night. He's relatively new.
It looks like he's connecting still right now.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Tony, I'm brand new, pretty much.
Well, welcome, Tony.
Absolutely brand new. And David Bell is relatively new.
He's brand new.
Welcome, David. Would you like to introduce yourself and say anything, you or Tony, either one?
I don't really have anything else.
How did you find us, Tony?
And I just did a, actually did a Google search online, just to try to find a group to join.
And what piqued your interest?
I just love, I've always loved stargazing. And I've done it since I was a kid, but just decided to take it up a notch and try to find a group of people that love the same thing that I love and learn from people.
Sounds fun to me. You were gonna come up last night, and you got a guest problem on you.
I did. I was so upset. I was like, you are crushing me here. I've got to go look at my stuff. But anyway, but I'll definitely be up there.
It was a pretty night last night. We wish you could have come on up. A lot of people were sharing a lot of equipment and a lot of knowledge, so.
And there's Pam. I don't know Pam. Pam must be new.
That's, no, that's actually Ken, I think.
Oh, is that Ken?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm on cellphone tonight, so I'm not sure how to work this thing. That's why I'm not saying a whole lot.
Well, Ken, we're glad you're here tonight, sir.
Thank you.
And David Bell was up last night.
Yes. Uh, David, can you hear us?
He stepped away, I guess.
All right, and I apologize. Is Sandra Morris?
Yeah, Sandy and Pat Morris.
Yeah. Yeah, they're new members.
Welcome, welcome, folks.
I've only been in the club about forty years.
Okay, I apologize. I apologize.
Well, it's been so long since we seen them, they might as well be new members. That's.
Yeah, we agree. We agree. It's been a long time.
Love you guys.
Thank you.
We call on Pat anytime we gotta drive a nail.
Alrighty, anybody else would like to introduce themselves? All right, well, then we will move along. We have our first presenter tonight, if I'm correct, is Carl.
That'd be great. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, good. I don't have a video, but I'm gonna let Bruce, or I'm sorry, Michael, share my slides and all. I was gonna talk through them. I'm, I've been in the club, I guess, a little bit over a year. I guess I'd call myself a beginner or intermediate astronomer, got about a thousand observations so far. And so I'm just gonna share you some ideas I have about eyepieces and don't claim to be an expert, but I'm just hoping to give you some of the things I've learned as I bought and sold eyepieces and some of the mistakes I've made, so hopefully y'all won't make the same mistakes I did.
Oh, I see it then.
All right, is it showing up?
Uh, don't see yet, Michael.
I said to hit share. Okay. Is it showing now?
There it is.
All right. Just let me know when you want me to advance the screen.
Uh, next slide, please. So I wanted to just kind of give you an introduction to how many varieties of eyepieces you have.
Hang on a second. Why is it not advancing? Okay, there you go.
So this slide is just trying to show you some of the array of choices you have for eyepieces. Um, the cheapest eyepieces start only, you know, thirty or forty bucks. Um, and then the one and a quarter inch eyepieces go up to, you know, a few hundred dollars. And the most expensive eyepiece I could find online was a three inch hundred degree field of view Explorer Scientific eyepiece for over a thousand dollars. So the prices and the sizes all vary quite a bit. Uh, next slide, please, Michael. If you don't think that's enough choices, they also have choices like zoom eyepieces, uh, eyepiece kits, and reticle eyepieces. So the number of options you have is just really pretty staggering. Uh, next slide, please. So if I was to, uh, when I'm looking to buy an eyepiece, I always ask myself a couple of questions. And the first is, you know, what are you using? Which telescope are you pairing your eyepiece with? What eyepieces do you currently have? Perhaps most importantly, what are you trying to observe? And what's your budget? And then overall, will the eyepiece work with the rest of your imaging chain? Be that your mount or your tripod or your telescope itself? Um, what equipment are you trying to pair it with? Uh, next slide, please.
Oops, hang on a second.
No, that's fine. Um, so unfortunately, this is kind of basic telescope math and, uh, and you're just gonna have to understand some of these ideas. And so this will be a little bit dry, but just trying to explain to everyone what are, what are these parameters and which one depends on the telescope? Which one depends on the eyepiece? Some depend on one, some depend on other, the other, and some depend on both.
Okay, somebody's in the background, or you might wanna
mute.
Mute, yeah.
You, could you go to the next slide, please, Michael? So this is, that's the summary, and we'll go through each one individually. So we go to the next slide again. So the, each telescope has a minimum and maximum magnification that's a useful uh, magnification for the telescope. It's roughly fifty power per inch. So for my ten inch dob, roughly five hundred power is max power. And the minimum power is roughly four times the aperture in inches. So roughly for, again, for that dob would be about forty times, uh, that'd be the minimum power. So that depends on only the telescope itself. Uh, next slide, please. The magnification that you get with any given eyepiece depends on both the telescope itself and the eyepiece. And just reminder, a long focal length, like twenty-five millimeters, is actually low power. Where a short focal length, like five millimeters, is high power. And so what you do is you just divide the focal length for the telescope, which is always stamped on the tube by the focal length of the eyepiece, and you come up with whatever power it happens to be. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, field of view tells you how much you can see through a given eyepiece. There's actually two sorts of field of view. There's the apparent field of view, and that's based on the eyepiece itself. So the way a lot of people explain that to you is if you look out at the horizon and hold the eyepiece up to your eye, how high up the sky can you see, um, through the eyepiece? So for a cheap eyepiece, it may be thirty or forty degrees. For an expensive eyepiece, that may be a hundred degrees, meaning if you look toward the horizon, you'd actually see all the way up to the zenith and beyond. Uh, so that's the apparent field of view. And then you also got to pair that with a telescope itself. So the way you calculate it, the true field of view is the apparent field of view divided by the magnification. So it changes based on the telescope as well. Uh, next slide. And please, this is not a formal talk at all, so anyone who has any questions, just stop me and we can, we can take a little detour if we need to. Um, uh, exit pupil means how big is the image at the size at your eye? Um, usually that's in the range of a few millimeters, you know, one millimeter to about six or so millimeters. And that depends both on the telescope and the eyepiece. Uh, next slide, please. Eye relief is how far away the image is from the eyepiece. So basically, do you have to put your eye on the eyepiece, or can you keep it a distance away? Uh, some people will say that only people with glasses need to worry about that. At least in my experience, that's not been true. I don't like getting eyeball boogers on the eyepiece. I like to have a little space, so a little space is a nice thing. So fifteen millimeters is a nice rule of thumb. Uh, next slide. Um, we won't delve too deep into this, but limiting magnitude is generally dependent on the telescope only. Um, and so for a telescope like my ten inch dob, the limited magnitude is about fourteen and a half, at least in theory. That's a very optimistic number based on really good, uh, seeing conditions, you know, really dark sky, those sort of things. Um, just as a short aside, remember that the higher the number, actually the fainter the object. So Polaris is a plus two. All Sirius is a minus one point five, so Polaris is much, much fainter than Sirius. Um, so just keep that in mind. And the other thing is, at least when I first started, I would see these, um, magnitudes for things like a nebula. It would be like a mag six, like a real bright nebula. And I'd say, oh, great, I can really see that with my small reflector. Well, nebula's and other diffuse sources of light, like globular clusters or comets, at least as a rule of thumb, you probably subtract about three mags. So if my telescope, my dob is a theoretical max of fourteen and a half, probably more realistically, it was thirteen to thirteen and a half. So for a globular, it's probably closer to about eleven. So it's, um, you know, just, just keep that in mind. Diffuse sources of light aren't like stars.
Carl?
Yes, sir.
This is Bruce. What that, when they, it would be useful to tell everybody that what that really amounts to is if you took that diffuse object and its, its light and concentrated it into a star, that's what that means. So, uh, it depends on how big the object is. Uh, your rule of thumb is a good one, I'm sure, but, uh, it's, it's, it's condensing that into a point of light and the magnitude it would have if it were a star.
Yeah, that's, that's a good point. You know, at the North American Nebula, which is at the zenith now in the evenings, you know, it's a relatively bright nebula, but, but it's a spread over a large area. And like Bruce is saying, you know, if you can do a point, it'd be pretty bright, but it's not. It's spread out, and it makes it really much harder to see. Uh, next slide, please. And lastly, resolution. That, that says, uh, how far apart can two points be? Where you can still ascertain their points and not a blob? And so that, uh, I think that depends only on the telescope. So can we go to the next slide, Michael? So this is, uh, trying to explain that in a little more fun way. Uh, so if you had, I actually own three telescopes here. So if you look at the top, it's a, it's a Lunt Solar Telescope. It's about eighty millimeters. And then the ten inch dob is there, the big black one. And then on top of the dob is actually a two hundred and fifty millimeter finer scope. So it's a little bit of a stretch, but that's my third telescope. Um, so if you, uh, put a twenty-five millimeter eyepiece in each of these, um, telescopes, what would you see? Well, on the right is an image trying to show, it's a simulated image of what you'd see if you looked through it. You can see that the little white circle is the finer scope. It would have the lowest magnification, only be at ten X. It would have a huge field of view, about six degrees. Then it would have the lowest resolution, about two arc seconds. The orange circle is what you'd have with, if you use the dob with the same eyepiece. And on that, uh, instance, you'd get a much smaller field of view, about one, one degree. You get a relatively higher magnification, about fifty X. And the resolution would be about half an arc second. So that would, if you use the same eyepiece for several different telescopes, you'd get different results. Uh, next slide, please. This is kind of the flip side of that. If you used one, one, uh, telescope, you use three eyepieces, what would you get? Um, these three eyepieces are just ones I pulled off the internet. I, I own one or two, but I don't own them all. Um, the teleview eyepiece is a wide field of view eyepiece. And you can see, it would give you a low power at twenty-five X and a pretty good field of view. This is the Wild Duck Cluster here in the center. And then if you use the orange Excel, uh, Celestron Excel eyepiece, you get kind of a mid-power there, about sixty-two X and a medium-sized field of view. And then if you use that better Morpheus, you'd get a higher power uh, at almost ninety. And the field of view is kind of funny, even though you, you're increasing the power from, as compared to the Excel, the field of view is almost the same. And that's because the apparent field of view of the Morpheus is higher than the Excel. So although you're magging up, the eyepiece had a wider field of view to start with, so it's more or less a wash. Does anyone have any questions?
Might go back about two slides. Uh, log five, or five log, back one more. Now, yeah, down there. Never heard of five log. What, where'd that name come from?
So I found, I found a couple of different, um, things online as far as formulas how people are computing, um, limiting magnitude for a telescope. Uh, Jim Dixon also said that was one he hadn't heard of. It was one I found online. Um, I'm not sure if it's valid or not. Um, there were other more complicated formulas online that actually took into play your type of telescope, the, the the exquisiteness or the, of the optics or lack thereof. And those sort of things. And it was a more complicated formula, but, um, you know, they do usually stamp that on the tube, what they say the limiting mag is, but I'm not sure. I don't remember, to be honest, where I got that formula from, somewhere online.
The, uh, can y'all hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, the, the, uh, the, the log five is, uh, it's the, and I'm doing this from distant memory, but it's like, it takes five magnitudes to make, uh, a hundred times difference or something like that. It's a, it's the, it's a it's a logarithmic scale, but it's, it's a base that's real strange. So, uh, like, for instance, the first mag, from first magnitude, the second magnitude is like two and a half or two point eight times, something like that. And then it, it just works like that because your eye is, is not linear. It's sensitive more like a logarithmic scale where something twice as bright doesn't really look twice as bright to your eye. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I've heard that. I think he was driving at where that formula come from as far as knowing the limiting magnitude of a telescope. And again, that's the part I don't remember. But yeah, on magnitude of a star, yeah, it is two point five or eight, or whatever that is.
Well, the, the, to calculate the theoretical on a telescope, you just take your aperture eye, which is, say, a third of an inch when it's fully dilated. And, uh, then your aperture of your telescope, which you say ten inches, which is gonna be thirty times the diameter, but you square that, you get nine hundred. And then you just take that, the logarithm of that to, to figure out how many magnitudes you can add to what you can see visually. Um, it's not really something you need to know to, to know how to use magnitudes, but, but that's the math, anyway.
So we go forward, uh, two slides, please, Michael. Uh, one more. And one more. So, uh, these are my general thoughts for, for if you were a beginner, starting off. Um, most time you're gonna be using low power. And so that, if you were gonna buy an upgraded eyepiece, that'd be the one I'd recommend to buy first. Um, the, the exception to that is if you really like things like the moon or the planets, then you're gonna want a high-power eyepiece. But for most people, low power is gonna be used most of the time. Um, I match the quality of your eyepiece with your mount. Again, you know, there's no reason to have a, um, uh, economical telescope and a premium eyepiece. You'd have to have kind of things that go together. Um, and exit pupil is a really important idea. I didn't understand when I first started. Um, somewhere around, uh, three to five millimeters is pretty good for, for most standard work. And somewhere around one millimeter is pretty good for planetary work. If you get above five or six millimeters, it starts to be larger than your eye can dilate, unless you're very young and very dark skies. And that can be a little bit of a problem. Um, I bought a lot of my gear used, and that's, that seems to have worked out pretty well. It's usually at a discounted price. And most time, the gear I've gotten online has been pretty well taken care of. And if you don't like it, you can always sell it back at almost the same price you bought it at. So that's, that's a nice thing. And then, um, I guess if we can go to the next slide. Um, the last thing I'd say is that I think there's a law of diminishing returns on this. I like, there isn't a lot of things, you know, guitars or whatever else you, you, your hobbies are. Um, at some point, at the beginning of the curve, you kind of get what you pay for. And then the curve goes up really steeply. And somewhere around a hundred or two hundred dollars, you get a whole lot of eyepiece. And then after that point, you start to get to where there's decreased returns. It's better, but not nearly as much as you're putting into it. And the curve's, uh, you know, leveling off. Uh, next slide, please. And so I always suggest to use a field of view simulator. This is the one I use. So this is like, uh, before I started using, um, solar astronomy, just to kind of get an idea of what, what the object's gonna look like, uh, before you, before you actually buy an eyepiece.
And that's, yeah, astronomy tool. Yeah, you got it down at the bottom. That's a very good one, by the way.
Yeah, so that's, uh, you know, you can, you can play with all the different numbers and you can play with eyepieces that are too expensive for your budget or whatever. Things are realistic, but and you can also, those other earlier slides show several eyepieces at once. You get a comparison of what it would look like in various telescopes or various eyepiece in the same telescope or whatever. So it's, it's pretty useful. Uh, if we can go to the next slide, please. So again, this is just, and that's kind of all the background. And I'm sorry, it's kind of a long talk, but this is, this is the discussion of the eyepieces I've had over the years um, and things that I, I, I learned from. Uh, the first eyepiece I had were modified acromats, which is kind of a, a base sort of eyepiece. The closest comparison I found was on this, uh, picture here, this plausal. Um, the problem with my first telescope, my first eyepieces was the eye relief was very low. Um, basically, again, you have to put your eye against the, uh, eyepiece to see. Uh, the field of view was very small, and on top of that, the, the mount was a little bit wobbly. And I had a hard time using high power. So if we can go to the next slide. Uh, what I really wanted to see when I started was the rings of Saturn. Um, so I couldn't see what the stuff I had. And I knew I really needed a higher, higher power to see Saturn, but, um, I also knew if I got too higher power, the, um, the, the mountain couldn't handle it. So I got this nine millimeter Excel eyepiece. And it was only fifty X, but I thought, you know, I was good enough to see the rings of Saturn. You can see the simulated image down below. Saturn's there, and you can see the rings, but it is a spec. So, um, anyways, but I was able to do what I was trying to do with it. Um, and it was a well-reviewed eyepiece. People thought highly of it online, so that's why I bought it. Um, so it was a big upgrade for me. Uh, if you can go to the next slide, please. Uh, and then shortly thereafter, uh, I've kind of started accumulating some more gear. I ended up buying that dob there on the, on the bottom. And then I bought the Excel eyepieces in five and twenty-five millimeters. And that really, at that point, gave me a huge range of magnifications, somewhere between fifteen, five, uh, two hundred and fifty X, which is, you know, low, medium, and high magnifications. Uh, and those eyepieces really did a whole lot for me. They had good eye relief. The quality of the images were good. Um, they had great range of magnification. And, and the, since they're one and one quarter size, they were cheaper than two-inch eyepieces. And accessories for them were cheaper than the, the two-inch accessories. Um, and some of those I bought used. So it was a really good set for me. And I use them quite a bit. If I only had three eyepieces, and those were the three I had, you could do quite a bit with those three eyepieces. Uh, next slide, please. And then I decided to, um, uh, buy a zoom eyepiece. I'd never had one before. But someone, a lot of people have said the batter gym was a really nice eyepiece online, so I ended up buying the batter gym. I bought it used for about sixty percent of the purchase, or the new price. It's a very versatile eyepiece, kind of like a Swiss Army knife. It does a little bit of everything. It's got a bunch of different adapters in the, in the kit. And if you buy, they also have a Barlow that comes with them. We'll talk about that at the very end, what a Barlow is. But if you bought the Barlow, the range of, of, of focal lengths goes from about four millimeters to twenty-four millimeters, which is just about every useful magnification there is. Uh, so very versatile eyepiece. Um, the stars were, are pretty good through the, uh, through the, um, through the batter. The eye, eye relief is good. Um, the, the thing, the zoom has just really taught me a lot. When I was first using, I was using it to hunt asteroids. And I realized as I zoomed in through the batter at twenty-four millimeters to, let's say, twelve millimeters, I could see quite a bit fainter stars and asteroids. It would, it would gain one or even two mags of, of, of visibility. And I did, and that's because of the, um, the exit pupil, and that's kind of why I started to understand exit pupil. So it's been a really useful eyepiece, and I've used it all the time, and I still have it. Um, uh, next slide, please. But if you don't like that particular zoom, you've got all these other choices for zoom eyepieces. Uh, the cheapest ones are about under a hundred dollars, and then the more expensive ones are, are batters on the more expensive side. Uh, and then they also even have things of this little teleview planetary eyepiece, so they, they can do anything you want to do. And they're, like I said, if you just go outside with one eyepiece and one small telescope, it's a nice one to take outside. Uh, next slide, please. And then I decided I really liked open clusters, so I thought I wanted the ultimate large field of view eyepiece. Uh, so I, I wanted to minimize my magnification. And then I didn't want to spend, spend a whole lot of money for the huge field of view eyepieces. The field of view, as the field of view goes up, the price goes up exponentially. So I, I got this Explorer Scientific thirty-two millimeter eyepiece. Um, the only problem with the eyepiece was I forgot about the exit pupil. Again, I didn't understand that at the time. And since the exit pupil is so large, um, it's, it's hard, it was hard for my eyes to get in all the light, because some of the light is at six and a half millimeters, that's wider than my pupil. And so some of that light is spilled around the pupil and the iris, and so you can't see it. You lose a little bit of the, um, the fainter objects with that, which is not a big deal a lot of times, but anyways, that was the, the biggest drawback to that eyepiece. If you can go to the next slide, please, Michael. Um, but again, that was a, a pretty good eyepiece for me. I liked it a lot. The stars were great. Um, it was a little bit heavy, and this started to get into some of my problems I realized over time, that I had to move the altitude bearings on my dob to keep it from falling over. Um, it's because it pulled the dob down. Uh, so that was, I, I didn't realize that was a problem until I, until I started messing with it. So next slide.
Didn't try using a counterweight?
Well, that came later. Um, so then I decided I wanted, I wanted a black eyepiece with green letters. Uh, so I got the, a teleview type four. Um, I was trying to fix the exit pupil, which I did. I got to about four and a half millimeters, which is pretty ideal for dark DSOs. And it had a pretty big field of view, you know, eighty-two degrees field of view, so it's more or less the same as Explorer Scientific, but it's a pound and a half. It, it is literally a pound and a half. It is a huge, uh, weight on the front of the telescope. And it, it, no matter what I did at that point, I couldn't use the dob with just as it was. So I had to get a counterweight and, uh, got a magnet counterweight to kind of move around. And as the, as the dob goes up and down, the counterweight has to go back and forth, or it won't stay balanced. So it's, um, I guess, part of the main thrust of this talk is everything has a, has a trade-off. Some things have better than others, but nothing's, there's no such thing as a perfect eyepiece. Uh, next slide, please. So that's what I currently have, uh, there for eyepieces. Um, the, uh, televiews in the back, and then the batteries in the back right, and then the Excels. And then the front one's a little bit of reticle eyepiece I bought used online, uh, to track planets with my, um, finer scope. Uh, next slide. I want to say a word about a Barlow. A Barlow is a lens that increases the scope of the telescope. So the most standard is a two X, and you can think about, about that basically as doubling the magnification of your eyepiece. So if you have a twenty millimeter eyepiece, you put a two X Barlow, all of a sudden you have a ten X or ten millimeter eyepiece, uh, equivalent. So it can, it can give you more versatility. Um, again, the standard is a two X, but they, they go all the way up to five X, if you can, you can find some that are unusual powers. Um, all the eyepieces do have built-in Barlos. You may, may not be aware of that, but like the Excels have built-in Barlos. Um, if you're gonna buy a Barlow, the, the biggest word of advice is to make sure you're playing carefully. Um, if you look at the first example here, if you have a twenty-five, twelve, and a five-millimeter eyepiece, you put a Barlow on it, you really haven't gained any useful powers. They're all pretty much the same, except for the two and a half millimeter. But if you did say more, a little more clever, like the twenty-five, fifteen, and five-millimeter eyepieces, all of a sudden, each time you Barlow to a two X, you would have a useful power. So you get six, basically six useful powers versus three. Um, I, I've heard, I don't own a Barlow, full disclosure. Uh, I have heard if you, you don't want to cheap out on a Barlow, it, the cheap Barlow is a problem. Uh, and the last thing I'd say is that I've called teleview a couple of times, asked them for some advice. And I asked Al Nagler last time I talked to him, I was like, well, what do you think about a Barlow or Powermate? He said, don't. So that guy who sells them says, don't buy them. So I, I don't know. Again, I don't have any experience with them, but I just, I thought that was interesting. That's what he told me. Um, next slide, please. Um, so eyepiece care, I just threw this in at the last minute, um, but, but Andrew actually told me this trick. If you get one of these little bulbs, you, you get a rubber bulb from a drugstore. This one's on Amazon. You can take it and blow off all the dust off your equipment without having to actually scrape a, scrape off the top of the lens, which is a good thing. And then he also turned me on this Nikon lens, uh, pen, which has a real soft brush on one end and a cleaner on the other. Again, to clean it up if you really have a, a big mess. Um, and the last thing, you can see this eyepiece on the bottom. This is a used eyepiece I bought online and did, you know, I guess I got what I paid for. Um, it has Um, it has eyepiece mold on it. I don't know if you can see those spots on it. That's actually mold or fungus. Um, and so that is a thing. And, uh. So when I first started, I think it was Michael who told me, you know, make sure you, when you take your stuff out at the end of the night. And you bring it in the house, make sure you let it air out for a day or two. And that's what I've always done. I always let it.
Well, doesn't have to be a day or two. It can just be for an hour. But you just let the moisture to evaporate off. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, usually when I'm coming in, my wife's sleeping and I just kind of throw it in, throw it in the, uh, on the bookshelf somewhere to let it air out, but. But don't put it away wet or you really, you really will get eyepiece molds. I was. I'd never seen them before, but, um, again, it's a thing. So. Um, and last slide, please. So I guess in summary, there, there are, uh, many, many choices for eyepieces and there's no single perfect eyepiece anymore. There's a perfect telescope. Um, so the biggest questions are what are you trying to look at and how much are you going to spend? Are you willing to compromise with a zoom eyepiece? It does everything a little bit, uh, okay. Or would you rather have a. Uh, fixed focal eyepiece that does it one thing well. And then match the quality of your eyepiece and your, and the rest of your imaging chain. And then just realize is if you, if you get heavier eyepieces, uh, you know, you have problems with your mount. And, uh, consider a low power eyepiece as your first upgrade. And I would also say that a couple of good eyepieces, two or three, or maybe even four. Was a lot better than ten cheaper eyepieces because you're only going to use. One or two in any given night. You probably aren't going to use five eyepieces. Um, and so make sure you use your simulator before you buy one. So you kind of plan out and make a good choice. And then it's, it's really nice to be able to borrow one of these or, or buy a used one again to, to try it before you buy it or try it at a cheap price. Um, anyway, that's kind of what I had. I'm happy answering your questions and, uh, hopefully that was helpful for you all.
Hey, great talk, man. That, uh, that's, that's a great talk. The, the, uh, I had one comment that you didn't touch on that you almost did, but. Uh, when using barloads, uh, if you have an eyepiece with a real wide apparent field. Um, the barlow will increase your magnification, but it doesn't change your parent field and, and, and really your eye relief. So if you have an eyepiece that you like. Uh, and it's comfortable, you can use a barlow with it and it's still about the same comfort level for you. Uh, you're just in the same apparent field. You just have more magnification. Um, so that's one of the things people like about barloads, but you're right. You don't want to buy a cheap one. They're, it just, it doesn't pay. Let's see, I had one other comment. What was I thinking? Um, the, uh, uh. Oh, I was going to say on the, the, you're exactly right. On the televiews and some of the more advanced eyepieces. That's basically a barlow's built into the design. And, uh, so when you're using, uh, one of those, uh, super wide field eyepieces. He has to put so many different types of glass in there to, to take out all the errors. It, it does get very heavy. And, um, that's just because it's, it's such a wide field of view.
Another thing, if you're using. If you're using a barlow and you're already using a field flattener, take the field flattener out, the barlow will flatten the field. Otherwise you just end up with extra weight that you don't need. You know, coma corrector, you know, don't use it. Take it out and, uh, the barlow will act as a coma corrector.
Yeah, I was just shocked that when I first got the explore scientific, I was like, man, this is a heavy eyepiece. And then I got the televiewer like, oh my gosh, it's just like a cannonball at the end of the, end of the dob because. It really is impressive in, in a bad way, sort of.
Well, see the nice thing about an equatorial mount is you can slide the, the telescope. Up and forward or backward and kind of counterbalance. It's, or use the counterweights. So it's. Dobsonian's a little tougher to deal with that.
Yeah. And then, but if you change eyepieces, whether you're an equatorial or a dob, if everything balanced, you change that out to a more normal weight. It just, it makes everything wacky again. But again, that's part, that's part of the pluses and minuses of any, using any eyepiece, you know, like I said, there's no.
Correct.
There's no perfect eyepiece.
Oh, one, one more little tricky thing that I've learned over the years. You know, a lot of the reason you want eye relief so you can keep your glasses on. And, and by the way, if you have Berilux or any of those. Or bifocals, those are not very good to use with a telescope. Uh, just a plain one prescription. Uh, eyeglass is the best. Uh, and you know, you can take your glasses off and refocus. If all your, your vision problem is purely just, uh, what they call sphere. Uh, if you have some astigmatism, you can't take that out no matter how carefully you focus. Um, but teleview, um, being who they are, they actually came out with a. A astigmatism correction that fits over their eyepieces. You just take the rubber eye cup off and this thing fits over. And then you have to twirl it to get it to the right axis for your astigmatism, but. It actually does work. I've got one that I bought a long time ago that. Uh, the problem is if I got to take it off if anybody else wants to look because it's, it's, it makes it worse for the, for them. But, uh, uh, it, there is such a thing. You have to know your prescription to, when you order it. You know, how strong your astigmatism is.
So I have a question. Uh, I asked a few of the guys this last night, but I've got a eight inch, uh, eight inch Dobsonian. And it came with like a twenty-eight millimeter. Okay. Now I've really, I need to study up on the exit pupil. I don't really understand that. But if you guys had a, a go-to size, uh, eyepiece, you know, I do have the bill, I've got two inch or inch and a quarter. Either one. So what size would you get with an eight inch? It's, it's twelve hundred millimeters. So I mean twenty-eight is, you know, around. You know, less than forty, I guess, but are around the forty mark. Which eyepiece would you guys get as far to see DSOs?
That's about what I would do, David. Somewhere in the mid twenties. Um, again, you just, just, uh, I don't, I can't do all the math out of the tip of my fingers, but you know, that'd be a very reasonable power. Probably a very reasonable e- exit pupil. You know, uh, you know, tw- twenty-five to thirty is going to be a real nice low power for you, somewhere in that range.
Yeah, I would use anything that will give you about a hundred power. Is pretty good for DSOs. It, it reduce, it darkens the field enough. You can see them a little better. And, uh, uh, you probably have to have another eyepiece that's lower power just to make sure you can find it. But, but then, then you can switch up to your hundred power, which if you have a twelve hundred. Millimeter focal length, well, I guess that would be a twelve. Millimeter eyepiece would be about your ideal for, for, you know, looking at faint fuzzies.
Yeah, your two, your two low power eyepieces, I, I agree with John. Uh, are eyepieces where the field of view is going to be important. Uh, and the lowest power cannot be all that expensive, but of course you got to get. You're going to spend, spend some money to get a wide field of view regardless, but it, it doesn't have to be a quality eyepiece is my point. You're just using it for binding. And you need the big field of view to help you see more of the sky. Then you need a nice obs- eyepiece to observe with. And John, about a hundred power is about right for dark sky. And again, a wide field of view is nice. Just because it gives you that perspective. Then after that. As you go up, maybe, you know, for other things like globulars and. And where, you know, and galaxies and, and planets where you don't feel a view done in that port and. You know, it's not, uh, all that advantageous to spend the money for one of those hand grenades or cannonballs.
No, I'll disagree with you there, Bruce. I was going to say I'll disagree with you, Bruce, because. One of the things I like to do is I have a, uh, forty-two millimeter Earth full, which is a really nice eyepiece. And with my telescope setup, it has a night, for example, one of the most beautiful views in there is you fit both of the. Uh, uh, double cluster in Perseus in there. That's one of the most beautiful views. It's just. Wow. And then it's just scanning through the, uh, Milky Way. It's beautiful and you, it's flat pretty much out all the way to the edge. So. You know, it depends what you want. I mean, for me, that's, that was a worthwhile expense because I like to do that. That is, uh, I like that nice field of view and. Seeing those wide, you know, if you get the, uh, you know, what's we call it, the lagoon nebula and the triffid in the same field, that's pretty too.
Yeah, I can see that.
Uh, I like the, uh, I like the, you know, not the real wide field eyepieces, but like the sixty-eight degree or sixty, sixty degree. Uh, which is like the excels, I think that, uh, that Carl was talking about. And, uh, tho- those are real reasonable and especially for your, like your twenty-five millimeter eyepiece that gives you, uh. What would that give you on twelve hundred, uh, for forty-eight power, fifty power? So, um, and that, there's a lot of things to, I, I've used the, about that power. For thirty years and, uh. Seen a lot of stuff a- a- and then go to a. And my, um, like my twelve millimeter or ten millimeter eyepieces there. I like my plosso. I've even got a, I've got an eighty-two degree Nagler, but I'll use my plosso most of the time. To look at stuff. Cause they're white and, and just good eyepieces. I've got teleview plosso down there, but they're not that expensive.
That's the other thing, David. I guess it depends on if you mean, are you looking at DSO? Do you mean open cluster? Or do you mean nebula? Or you mean globular? Cause some of that will, will depend. I guess for me, when I was talking about my questionable large field of view eyepiece. I'm like Michael Barelli. I'm looking for a really large open cluster. And I want to see it all at once. So that, that was my goal. But again, if you're doing other things, that may not be your goal.
Really, it's just, uh, I, I want to see it all, you know? I don't want to spend a fortune on it. And the twenty-eight's okay. I mean, I, I, I was able to see most of those, uh, clusters last night. And nebula, maybe not so much, you know, something like Orion. I, I couldn't see much more than, I did see, uh, one Michael showed me last night. I don't even remember which one that was actually, but. Lagoon, okay, okay, good deal. Uh, but I would say. So, so I'm hearing that I should probably buy a twelve thereabouts to give me a hundred power in. But if I'm going to buy a quality eyepiece, it probably needs to be in that range.
I would think so.
Okay. And then maybe get a, get a forty or forty-two just to find and like Michael was saying, just to be able to have a wider field of view there.
Right. But if you want to go planetary, either make the decision to go with the twelve and the barlow, or do you get a six millimeter eyepiece? So you have to make your call.
Right now, I've got an eight by twenty-four zoom with a barlow and I have no idea if the barlow's quality or not. I would guess not because that's, it came with the scope. So, uh, you know, so I can get it down to, you know, four to twelve with that zoom piece and it works pretty well. It's okay. I mean, it's not too bad, but it's not quality. It was only, uh, I don't know, eighty dollar eyepiece, something like that.
Yeah, a forty millimeter, forty millimeter might be a little much for, for your scope. I think you said it's twelve hundred. I think thirty, thirty would be more like it.
Thirty or thirty-five, yeah.
Yeah. You want, you want about four and a half per inch power. Three and a half to four. Well, and at your age, probably four. My age, I could even use less, but you know, it's, uh, it's, as, as Carl says, you're. It's not that it's bad to have an exit pupil that's larger than your, than your eye can take in. You're just wasting the light. If you want the wide field of view. Get the, get, you know, get the lower power eyepiece, but you're, you're losing the light.
I'll have to study up on that. I don't understand that on that well, but.
Well, the nice thing about having a zoom eyepiece, David, is you can try out all these different powers for free. And just kind of see which power you think is best. Cause it, what, what we're saying is what we like, but you may not. So just. Dial in a certain power and see if you like it or not. If you don't try, try different powers. See if you like that one. And then when you figure out which, which zoom setting you use the most, buy that fixed focal length eyepiece.
Okay.
Um, some night and then get people to loan you. There's a couple of their favorites. I got a little cheap SV Boney forty millimeter, which that was about the lowest power thing I saw on the market and it was only about thirty-five or forty dollars. So that's a win.
Okay.
Folks seem to like that one. So something high powered, something low powered. You've got one in the middle.
Right.
Okay, first item.
Got any more questions out there?
What was the lowest magnification that the scope was good for on one of your early slides? They were talking about.
Probably four X per inch.
Four X per inch?
Yeah, more or less. And, and these numbers are, I can either share you my slides, you, they're all online. And I, I think they're even the document I sent out. In fact, I know they are. So I'm happy to send that to you if you need it.
Yeah, I can find that. I just hadn't thought about lowest useful power.
The, uh, the four X comes from, if you assume your, your maximum. Uh, dilation is like a quarter of an inch or one fourth of an inch. So four X power is going to give you, uh. You know, you're just taking any number of inches and dividing by four. And that's going to be your X people. So anything larger than that. You know, if your eye can only accommodate a quarter inch. Then that's where that four, four, four X per inch comes from.
Okay.
Pretty simple, actually.
Maybe get the operation to. Give you some, uh, dilation.
I dialer. I've wondered about that too.
I, I, I recommend not doing that.
Just in one eye.
See, at my age, I've probably got a five millimeter. Text, uh, pupil at most. So I'm. So a fifth of an inch.
So you'd use five X per power per inch then.
Right. But I really don't worry about it. If I want a wide field of view, I put the eyepiece in there. They'll give me that wide field of view. I mean, I'm just use, I'm not, I'm using a smaller telescope and the one I have is what it amounts to. But that's all right.
Yeah, well, whatever works.
It's not a bad, it's not bad. You're just not getting all the light that's coming out of your.
Have you ever, uh, used your scope in the daytime and, and you get this weird? You know, vignetting effect when you look through your eyepiece. It, it's nothing to do with your scope. It's the fact that your eye is. Very undilated. It's constricted way down to a very small entrance pupil. And you can only see a small part of the light cone coming out of the eyepiece.
I have a quick question. Um, what kind of scopes does everybody have?
Fire range.
Or what's your favorite, I guess, maybe?
I've got an eleven inch Caseran and a sixteen inch Dobsonian.
Okay.
I keep mine simple. I have a, uh, two six inch Newtonian reflectors and an eight inch Newtonian reflector. They're simple and inexpensive.
That's awesome.
The cast grains are small for the aperture. So people like those because they fit in a little suitcase they can carry around. They don't like paying for them, but they like transporting them.
Yeah.
Your best one you'll get out and use all the time.
There you go.
Easy to work with. Not, that's, you know, that's me.
Yeah, I echo that. I've got that black Dobsonian I showed in the video is eighty, eighty-five pounds like that. I'm six, four, two fifty. And I, I carry it outside, but begrudgingly some nights. My little refractor is. Fifteen pounds with the refr- with the OTA and the, and the tripod and that, and that lunt gets more use, not more use, but it gets at least as much use. Even though it's much smaller. It's just, it's just a lot of work to carry the dob out and it's only ten inch.
David Bell's got the eight inch, uh, Dobsonian Newtonian. And I, I think that's everybody's, uh, pretty much everybody, when somebody says, what should I get as a telescope? First telescope, that's a common suggestion. It's simple. And got plenty of aperture for the money and. Lot to be said for it.
Right. One of the things I'll, I'll point out is when you get those dobbs and they have the altazimus mounts. You really got to learn how to, to star hop if you want to find some DSOs. That's why I always liked the Newtonian because you could use setting circles and find something.
Yeah, but you got to get all that set up.
Doesn't take that long.
Yeah.
I bought a grab and go a couple of years ago, eighty millimeter F five. Uh, I think it's, uh, I think it's made, but, uh. That's a nice little scope. You've got to put it on a decent, I've got a decent mount for it. But, uh, you can see most of the, most, most of the, uh, you can find most of the, uh, measure objects with it. And so you can get good views of the moon. It's real easy to, uh, real light on your budget and easy to take out. Something that, that's a good starter scope until you get better. Something that's a good starter scope until you get better. Something else is to borrow, go go uh, uh, check out a library telescope at the library.
We also have, we also have four telescopes that we loan out to uh, club members. So you can always borrow one of those.
Well, I had one, um. Long story about that, but anyway, it was a um, Orion. Skyview Pro with an equatorial mount, eight-inch aperture.
Oh, my goodness, you went to right to the uh, higher end of things.
I did, and um, I loved it. It was just, of course, massive. Like, who wants to move that? Nobody, not me. I don't. I want to get out there and be able to grab and go. Um, so I'm looking for something like that. Something easily portable that's going to show me all the things that I want to see.
I'm not sure what your budget is. I got a Vixen eighty-millimeter refractor. Um, this spring on a on the uh, port of two tall mount. Uh, that that's a really nice telescope. Again, it's under twenty pounds, the entire setup. You know, eighty millimeters is a little bit small for for DSOs, but you know, for planets and uh, the moon and even for the sun. If you want to put a filter on it, it worked really well for that. Um, it's actually up for sale if you want it, so uh.
But I mean, another common scope is a six-inch F-five or F-eight telescope on an equatorial mount. You can get a go-to version of it anywhere between six hundred and eight hundred dollars, or you get a simpler versions closer to five hundred.
Well, and and if you're looking at portability and you're making trade-offs and aperture. Uh, the equatorial mount comes with extra weight because you got to have counterweights and all that. Look at Chris's, Tody's uh, uh, Alt Asmath uh, scope behind him there. Uh, those, those are nice grabbing go scopes. In uh, six-inch, five-inch, or even eight-inch range, because you don't have all the counterweights and stuff.
Yeah, the counterweights is what got me.
It's Alt Asmath, but who cares? I mean, you know, if you're not doing imaging, uh, it works just fine.
Again, some people find difficulty star hopping to find objects. Now, if you have an a Dobsonian go-to, that's a different story.
Well, his is not a Dobsonian. It's a Alt Asmath uh, on a tripod there. It's a Schmidt Caseran on a. On a one-out, one-arm. Uh, Alt Asmath mount. It's got a computer and all that.
Okay, so say that's go-to though, right? Yeah.
And it has, and it has a wedge.
Yeah, and you can do it with a wedge, and there you go. You got imaging. So you got it all right there with no counterweights.
Uh, pretty, yeah.
But you know, I like to do the goat, the uh, star hopping. I, in fact, I'm doing a program right now, and I'm trying to decide if I want to continue it, because the damn thing is so automated. You know, finding it is, for me, finding the objects uh. Physically is half, if maybe more than half the fun. It's the challenge, you know, tracking it down and learning the constellations and and so forth. And learning to judge the difference in the different magnitudes of stars, so you can find your way around is uh, sort of the fun. And I, I don't know if I want to keep doing this, what I'm doing. It just slews over there and it finds itself, and there it is, you know?
Another thing is the is the binocular programs, you know, the uh, uh, fifty measurier objects and uh. Uh, there's some other binoculars programs to to learn to use the binoculars before you try to use the scope. Then you learn the constellations.
Now, we've also got Ed giving a presentation tonight. We don't want to forget it.
Yeah, yes, yes, we do. Yes, we do.
Five minutes before the end of the meeting, so.
Ed, would you like to step up? Do you have enough, do you have enough time?
Is everybody about to get off the call? I mean.
No, no, we'll wait.
No, we'll wait.
I've been on here for about two hours, so it's all good.
I can stay on a few more minutes, but I may have to bump off that, sorry.
My uh, monitor keeps going off, so I don't even know. There it is. Well. All right, if my monitor doesn't go blank again, um. I've been to Stellifane in Vermont a couple of times in the past, and. This year I was on the fence about whether I wanted to get on an airplane and go up there. But uh, I got a book that one of the members of that club wrote back in the seventies. It's usually pretty high-priced. It's out of print, but it came up on Amazon as a used book for a reasonable price. And it's a biography of Russell W. Porter. Who um, I'll talk about in just a second. And I read that and I thought, well, I'm gonna go. So I I've got my plane tickets and headed up there and went to uh. To Stellifane in Vermont. All right, is my slideshow up?
Yeah.
Okay. So this was in August of twenty-twenty-one in Springfield, Vermont. It's a little bitty town, kind of in southern Vermont. And uh, it's been held there. This was the eighty-fifth time that it had been held.
Yeah.
Now, it started in nineteen twenty-six, and they skipped a few years when. Uh, at the end of World War Two and a couple of other times. Uh, but for the most part, it's uh, been going on for. Close to a hundred years now. So Russell W. Porter was a native of Springfield, Vermont. He, when he was young, he went on several Arctic exploration deals. Was a member of a crew on on several expeditions, and he did a lot of the surveys and things on those crews. So he. I would guess was self-taught as a surveyor and knew how to use optical instruments and was very precise in what he did. He studied as an architect. He was an artist and did all kinds of other, other stuff. He's a machinist as well. You've seen his drawings. There's a drawing here of the two-hundred-inch dome at Palomar that the uh. Telescope is in uh, out there in California. He actually owned the site where Stellifane. Is today. So another important figure was James Hartness. He was a mechanical engineer. And he ran the Jones and Lamson Machine Company in Springfield. Springfield is on a river that has enough fall to it that they can run a lot of machinery with water power. And this company built different machine type things. And he came there and he had patented a turret lathe, and that's him standing next to or operating a turret lathe. That they manufactured in that plant, and he had a lot of money because he got a royalty every time they sold one of those. And these were sold for many, many years out of that plant. He even was governor of Vermont for one term in the early nineteen twenties. So Bruce talked about screw threads last month and the different types of screw threads that exist. And. Having just been up there in Vermont, I went to something called the American Precision Museum, which is in Windsor, Vermont. A little bit north of Springfield. That is where in an elementary school, when you learn about standardized parts being pioneered in manufacturing in the United States. It started in that building that this machine is in. And the company standardized gun parts. And that's how. The United States Army was able to manufacture so many guns for the Civil War and and everything else. They've manufactured guns for this machine right here. Was the result of and the reason for a lot of things I'm going to talk about. It's a result of a problem in standardizing screw threads during World War One. Manufacturers were having a hard time with different standards for screw threads and different qualities of screw threads. James Hartness represented the Mechanical Engineers Organization on something called the National Screw Thread Commission. That was formed to standardize screw threads. He was on that commission. And when he went. After the war to apply some of the things that they had. Talked about on that commission, he recruited Russell Porter back to Springfield, because he knew he liked to deal with optics. To help him design this machine, that you could put a machined part, like something that was threaded. On and optically. Magnify that part so that you could compare it. To what you needed for your standard, and you could use. Uh, measurement devices after you magnified it enough so that you could see it well enough to use those. Use those measurement devices. So this machine is the reason Russell Porter came back to Springfield, Vermont. Governor Hartness was an amateur astronomer, and he built this wild-looking thing on the grounds of his house. I took this picture in twenty-seventeen. The house is, was turned into an inn, and now it's for sale. Uh, it has in the ground underneath it a tunnel that goes out to this telescope. So he could go out, even if there was five feet of snow on the ground, and observe. Because he could get inside of here from inside of the house and stand in one spot. And the telescope would rotate around the axis, the the equatorial axis. And the eyepiece is in the center of that. So you just stand there in one spot and move the telescope around so that you can observe. And that's still there, and that, it's a big house on a bunch of acres, and it's for sale right now if you want to buy it. Underground there, there is a museum with a lot of the telescopes that. This club that I'll tell you about built over the last hundred years. And the man who wrote the book that I bought that inspired me to go this year gives tours of that museum. This year he did not because of uh, the hotel being closed down. So at the factory there in Springfield, uh, Russell Porter decided to form a club of employees. Of the Jones and Lamson, Lamson Factory to grind mirrors and build telescopes. And they got together in nineteen twenty to do this. He got together about. Couple of dozen people, and sorry about the slides moving around. They conducted classes on the site of the plant, and they would go out to this site that's in this photograph. That shows Porter's land outside of Springfield. Where uh, he owned a few acres his family had, and they would go out and camp and look at the sky with the telescopes they made. And this is where they built the famous pink clubhouse that I'll also talk about a little bit. It's still there, but it's a beautiful place. It's, it's dark too. It's remarkably dark. Uh, it's not that populated in that part of the world, but you would expect more light pollution. So they built the pink clubhouse in the early twenties. Porter designed it and the club built it. And it sits on this rocky point here that at the top of this hill. Porter built all kinds of neat stuff into the clubhouse itself. On the backside, uh, on the south side, there's a sundial. There are also a couple of different telescopes. They're, they're kind of defunct now, but he would have mirrors that were outside the building. It would direct light into the clubhouse. And you could observe from inside of it. So they're always messing around with things like that. And this is where the club has a lot of photographs and sketches that Porter drew. He did caricatures of people who visited and people who remembers the club, and those are all still in that building. In nineteen thirty, the club built this telescope, which is called the Porter Turret Telescope. The word turret appears several times. James Hartness invented the turret, this turret lathe and. Patent it. Then he built a turret telescope mount in his yard. Then Porter built this turret telescope. And it is a big equatorial machine. It points at the North Star in the center of that little dome-like area. And then the arm you see has a mirror at the end of it. That is used to direct the light into the middle of the. Of that building, and you observe from a point on the inside there that does not move. Uh, and they've tried to modernize this over the years. I'm not so sure it really works. They're always messing with it. When I've been at Stellifane, because these things, it's a, that one's ninety-one years old, so. So it takes a lot of, lot of effort among all these amateur astronomers who like to tinker and build stuff. All right, still having trouble with my monitor turning off. Okay, so. They built that in nineteen thirty, and nineteen twenty-six, they started having gatherings at the site every year. And people would come and visit and enjoy looking at all the things they built. And also just having a good time, looking at the stars as well. Still having trouble with my monitor, so. Crap now, I don't mean.
Maybe we can see fine, maybe you can't.
Yeah, I don't know what slide you're on, obviously. That's my problem.
Go back. Go back. Back. Go back. Go back.
Pretty telescopes.
That's about where you left off. Swap tables.
Okay, uh, now I've got it back up. So in nineteen twenty-six, they started having the the club meetings. And those are on the site that's marked Stellifane in the upper left. It's maybe three acres up there. And they would camp in pastures around there, but then over the years, people planted trees on those pastures. And a few years. You know, went by and they bought about forty acres over there on the right-hand side of the screen. And that's where they developed a really elaborate camp, essentially. The machine works is gone. They don't, um, they don't have that big factory there anymore, so the members come from all over the northeast. And Boston and other places like that. And a club out of Boston really kept the place going for years. So they all come together and maintain this. Forty-plus acre site. It's a, it's a whole lot to, to maintain. The uh, morning of the Saturday of the meeting, they have swap tables, so people come and bring all the junk they've accumulated. A few, they're not supposed to be commercial vendors. There's some really nice stuff, and if you're there in a car, you can buy more stuff. Than if you're flying on an airplane. So I'm always limited to little bitty things. They'd had a gully washer of a rain the week before, and this was really soggy out in this site. The whole place, all the dirt roads were really wet, but people get up at dawn and come out to that part. So the main thing that goes on is the telescope-making competition. People bring in telescopes they've built. They've some have brought in old telescopes they've restored. There's um, stuff like the one on the right that's kind of assembled out of junk parts. There's some really good woodworking, and then there'll be people who are fantastic machinists who build things out of metal. Uh, one guy has a telescope that's just, he has brought it all three of the years that I've gone. It's kind of work in progress. It's fantastic metalwork. There weren't that many entries this year because a lot of people decided not to to come out. But it was still really nice to to see. So observing takes place mainly on this site at Stellifane East. That's a really steep hill that goes to the south. You can see a little domed observatory there. There's another observatory behind where I was standing when I took the picture. And this is just early on, but by dark, there's about twice this much set up out there. And just hundreds of people milling around. You can hear them talking about what they're looking at, and they'll show you different things through their telescopes. And it's a lot of fun to. just be out there and, and be able to see what you can. And it's as dark as it is RRO without any real appreciable sky glow around the edges. There's a prison somewhere near Springfield, but it doesn't cause a whole lot of, whole lot of trouble when you uh, when you try to observe. All right, tell me what slide you see because I don't.
Saturday night awards and talks.
Changed the.
Yeah. All right, so on the Saturday night, they have talks in this large kind of natural amphitheater. The screen you see over to the left is a projection screen. They project the, the award winners on it and then slides from the presenters. The club members all wear light blue shirts and they're down near the screen setup. Few people camp up in this area. There's a food vendor up on the hill here. And uh, that was before the crowd really filled in, but it was, it wasn't a small crowd this year. It was, it was really good. And Stella Kafka or Kafka from uh, American Association of Variable Star Observers talked about Beetlejuice this year. It was, they usually get somebody who's pretty well-known to, to speak. The Naglers give away a bunch of eyepieces during this presentation. You buy tickets during the the convention and then they have a drawing on Saturday night for several different sets of, of Nagler eyepieces and probably twenty or thirty thousand dollars worth of eyepieces that they give away. They donate each year. Al Nagler was not there this year, but I think his son was at, at this one. All right, tell me what's on this slide.
Next convention.
All right, so the next convention will be in July of next year. And uh, that's the pink on the pink clubhouse. There are a lot of different uh, theories about why it's pink, but uh, it's been that way for a hundred years and it's really, really neat deal. So I encourage you to go. Um, it's a nice camping trip with observing in a neat place and it's not that difficult to get there. You just fly up to, I fly to the Hartford, Connecticut Airport. This morning I woke up near Gilbert, Arkansas and drove home. Took me two hours. When I go up to Stellifane, I land at Hartford. Takes about two hours to get from there to Stellifane and I go through four different states. So uh, it's all compact up there in, in New England. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Great trip. What did you bring home?
What did I bring home?
Yeah, you said you went to the swap late.
Yeah. I bought had to be small. I got this little collimation tool thing. And uh, oh, a light pipe. I bought it from Gary Hand who uh, even though you're not supposed to be a commercial vendor and he is, he always has a bunch of stuff. I got that and what else? Oh, just some other little doodad. Has to be small if you're on my leg.
It's always fun for you to share that trip with us.
I enjoy hearing it every year, sir. Thank you.
All right. Well, if I go back next year, I'll take some more pictures.
Maybe somebody can take a trailer.
Yeah.
That'd be a drive, wouldn't it?
There's one guy.
Three days.
There's a fellow who's probably, he's probably about eighteen or nineteen. His name is Zane Anders and he's been in some of the astronomy magazines. He's a real enthusiastic young guy. He, he builds a lot of telescopes. He always buys a whole lot of stuff. You see him carrying around big telescopes. I guess he he must, he lives in Connecticut, I think, and collects a bunch there.
Gotta take John with his binoculars up there.
Yep, he could enter. I'm sure.
I just can't fit them on the airplane.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Ed. We sure appreciate it, sir.
Yeah.
And we're grateful every year when you, when you give us this presentation. Does anybody, did I miss anybody earlier? Uh, that's new to the group that hasn't introduced themselves that would like to at this point? All right, uh, I, I do have a, a quick little reminder. Uh, I just wanted to announce to everybody that uh, that uh, that the monthly programming is now included on the, the club calendar each month. And uh, to be looking online for the moon event for the sixteenth, uh, which is this next weekend. Which it's got a, Darrell will be talking about the moons in general, including Jupiter and perhaps Saturn. Uh, real-time images of these we provided by Chris Lasley and Danny Filpo. And from, from their RRO observatories and Rocky will be providing a tour of the moon. And uh, along with, like I said, we'll have a, a live presentations from Danny and Chris's instruments that'll all be streaming on, on this next weekend. And uh, y'all keep an eye out on that. Uh, we'll have it on YouTube, Facebook and on Zoom. And uh, we just want to say thank y'all for participating tonight. And if anybody else has got anything else.
Just a question. Uh, hopefully it'll be clear next uh, weekend, but what if it's not? What is it? What's the alternative plan?
Well, if uh, some of the other members were here, I'd probably say that it will end up just bumping it by a, a day or two or maybe within uh, three days as an alternative.
I thought about maybe just doing a PowerPoint with the, you know, the optics we were, we were going to look at anyway. But uh, it'd be better to have it live for sure.
Oh, with the S.
We're, we're shooting for live and if it doesn't, then we may end up just having presentations, so.
Can we stream a scope from Texas to Oklahoma?
We can, we can stream anywhere that they connect into us via Zoom.
I mean, we could zoom into the other telescope maybe and get clear skies.
That might happen. All right, um, and uh, don't forget that uh, there is a if you want to be a presenter or if you want uh, to cover any topics in any month, please reach out to us. Uh, we'll be happy to get you signed up. And that way you can continue to help participate in the group itself. And um, on that, I think we're just going to close up for the night.
All right.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Clear skies.
Take care, everyone.